So, good evening, everyone. I will call our work session to order that is being held virtually via WebEx of April 14th, 2021. We have a joint work-study session between the Transportation Commission and the City Council to briefly review and approve the 494 Airport to Highway 169 Vision and Public Engagement Activities related to the identified Project One elements. And as a reminder, the purpose of the work session is to obtain guidance from the City Council on elements related to the future Portland Avenue interchange design and subsequent impacts to Portland Avenue and the surrounding projects. This discussion will guide staff's input to MINDOT's 494 Technical Advisory Committee, who are currently working towards an approved preliminary layout for Project One. So that's just a brief review. I will pass it over to Public Works Director Asher to just give us a little bit more on the project and what we'll be doing tonight during our time together.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and City Council members and commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. Can everybody hear me just fine? So, as the mayor suggested, we're asking for your time tonight so we can get, so you can all provide into the staff and the 494 project team was here on the 494 Quarters of Commerce, details related to Portland. The project technical team has really been digging deep for a long time now and pretty intensely in the last few weeks to months. I'm looking for ways to reduce the size of the 77th and Portland intersection specifically. So we've spent a lot of time discussing intersection types, turn lanes, through lanes, and even reopened the discussions about the 494 interchange type itself, which was identified as a tight diamond as part of the vision process. So, all in efforts to reduce that footprint and the number of lanes at 77th and Portland. So what MINDOT will present tonight is two options for the 494 interchange, how they each impact that intersection of 77th and Portland and what the trade-offs are for both. And because Niklet and 12th and Portland are all being consolidated at this one intersection, we know that we're going to have more traffic there and because more traffic's being directed there and so the intersection is going to have to grow and get bigger. And what we also need direction on tonight is what does that look like? What do those those impacts look like in that area? So we do want to make sure that everybody understands the content. I think it's it's not all new information, that's for sure. I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time. So this is kind of getting into the details a little bit. And we want to make sure that you understand the content. So please ask questions as we move along about that. If there's something that MINDOT staff is presenting that you're not following, let's make sure you can follow it and you get your questions asked as we move along. But then we'll wait until after the presentation is complete to really discuss the information that's presented. Hopefully, if we need some help, we have technical people here. As far as city staff, myself, Joe Powers, our city engineer is here, Melissa Paleman with Community Development, and Chris Wybe. I don't know if Chris is on at the moment, but he may be on as the acting Recreation Director. Happy County's Transportation Engineer Josh Potter is here to listen in and help with the discussion if needed. Then the MINDOT staff, Amber Blanchard is the I wonder who she is. She's our major projects manager with MINDOT. And then Andrew Latoya is the West Area Engineer. And I didn't see if April Rocket had made it done. It doesn't look like it, but she may pop on. So with that, I guess MINDOT's going to do the presentation. I will be monitoring the chat. So if you do have questions and that's your preferred way to get them out there, I'll make sure that they get get shared. So anyway, take it away, Amber.
Thanks, Kristin. Andrew, you're gonna run the presentation?
I am bringing up the presentation now.
Okay.
Starting with the rule one.
Sounds good. Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council and Transportation Commission. Thank you for having us today. And hopefully, we can answer any questions you have and get some feedback from you for, just like Kristin had mentioned. So I'm going to go through a really quick overview and then Andrew's going to dig into much more of the details here of what we're going to talk about tonight. So. Is it moving?
It doesn't want to. Okay, how about that?
All right, there you go. Okay, so really quickly, I'm going to run through the project goals. These are a part of our NEPA process as well. And so these have been identified as part of our purpose and need for for the corridor. So those goals are to reduce traffic congestion, to improve safety for all users, not just vehicles, but also non-motorized, update the infrastructure, improve the drainage systems and reduce flooding and runoff, and improve connectivity for bicycles and pedestrians across 494. So, next one, Andrew. So this is really just a general look at our overall timeline. I'll talk more in detail about schedule in just a bit. But Andrew started working on this study for this corridor back in 2018, and I joined in 2019. And so we've gone through two phases of analysis and screening. And then we had a major decision in the end of February with our Policy Advisory Committee. And they decided on what the first project should be. And we've been in the preliminary design and environmental development phase for quite some time now. And eventually, we're going to get into final design and the construction of the first project, which will be happening in 2023. So this is the vision. If you're not familiar, I know we've talked about this before, but this is the vision of 494. And the entire corridor goes from Highway 169 to the airport, although our MINPASS is going to go from 169 to approximately 77. In the eastbound direction, it will end at 77, but in the westbound direction, we're actually going to start it roughly around 24th Avenue. And that is identified here in green. And then also part of the vision is, of course, our turbine interchange at Highway 35W and 494. And then in addition to that is the access changes that we're going to be doing along Portland or, excuse me, along 494 at Niklet, Portland, and 12th avenues. But we do recognize that between roughly Lindale and 24th, there are a lot of changes in access going on to the local system as well, including the 77th Street underpass. So the PAC did, like I had mentioned before, the PAC did work on this vision and concur with it last year. And just recently, Andrew, you can move to the next slide, please. Just recently, at the end of February, I'd mentioned that we had the decision on what our first project scope is going to be. And along with that, really is the implementation plan of the entire vision itself. And that implementation plan is made up of four projects. We've got our first project, as you can see here, that has elements three, four, and seven. And that would be Highway 100 to 35W, MINPASS in both directions. Also includes the turbine interchange. And then the bridges over 494 at Niklet, Portland, and 12th, as well as a new proposed pedestrian structure and bicycle structure, because it can be used by both, across 494 at Chicago Avenue. So that's the first project. The second would be what we call Element Six, which is the reconstruction of the railroad bridge that's existing between Lindale and Niklet, and that would be done next. And then the third project is the construction of MINPASS between 35W and 77 in both directions. And then Project Four is the construction of MINPASS between 169 and 100, as well as the completion of the 82nd Street interchange and grade raise on 35W, which is Element Five. So this plan is meant to be flexible. It's meant to be a guide for those doing project development, including Andrew and myself. And the flexibility comes with potential funding sources. So if, for instance, some of the elements get funded before others, that's okay. There is a sequence, at least for the first two projects, just because of constructability issues. For example, the bridges at the railroad, Niklet, Portland, and 12th have to be reconstructed first just because they're they're not big enough to accommodate MINPASS underneath in both directions. So there, some of those constraints are also thrown into that as well. The PAC concurred on this, like I mentioned, the end of February. And ever since then, Andrew and I have been working very, very hard, lots of long hours and with our TAC members as well, with the cities as well, and the county to get to the point we're at today. And our focus has been at Portland recently, but we've been looking at other areas as well. So you can go to the next slide, please. So we just finished our first round of engagement regarding this first project. And we separated the areas into roughly three areas. We had the Trunk Highway 100 to France area, and that's on the left side. We had the turbine interchange area, which is in green. And then the Niklet, 12th, and Portland area is the far two on the right. And so we held these these listening sessions for the public, and we also held one for the businesses in the vicinity of Niklet, Portland, and 12th, like as you can see here. And really, the idea was to get feedback on specific elements of these areas. So for instance, in the France Avenue area and 100, we looked and presented on the frontage roads on either side of 494, as those are going to be changing due to the expansion of 494 to accommodate MINPASS. And so as you can see, we had 59 participants in the first one at France and 100. We had 85 participants for the interchange area. And then we had a combination of 14 and 63 between the business and public listening sessions for Niklet, 12th, and Portland. And some of the questions you can see here in comments that we got are on this slide as well. A lot of questions regarding access in the interchange and along with Niklet, Portland, and 12th as well, since access is changing in both of those areas. And our second round will be conducting here in a couple of weeks, the 27th, 28th, and the 29th of April. And for those, we plan on taking the comments that we heard from the first round and incorporating what we can and considering those comments into the design so that we can present it during the second round. And we've got our 494 Open House website is up and running and has been for the last couple of weeks to gather comments as well. And those comments will be collected through April 26th, which will be the day before the first listening session for this second round. And one of the reasons we are doing this so quickly is because we have some deadlines coming up. One of those, and the really critical one, is our acquisition of parcels that are inland and strips that are needed for the reconstruction in the first place. That process takes two years. And so in order to make sure that we remain on schedule and we can get construction going in 2023, we really need to figure out what parcels we need to acquire, what our construction limits are, so where those temporary construction easements will be. And that kind of sets in motion the right-of-way process. And that is why we're focusing so hard on these areas, particularly Niklet, 12th, and Portland, just to, due to the amount of work that we needed to do to get our geometric layout ready to go, so that we can start that whole process going.
Did you lose? Did you lose this presentation?
I did, yes.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. I'll keep talking. You get it up.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. A couple of other reasons that we've been going pretty fast on this too is for the environmental document. We want to get that out this year. And then the other reason too is we are doing an internal budget setting process at MINDOT the end of May. And so as much of the layout we can get done, so we can cost estimate it as accurately as possible and do our budget setting, is also much appreciated too. Andrew, I saw a question in the chat box.
Sure. As soon as I get mine. Okay, there you go.
Lower amount of right-of-way acquisition proposals. Oh, that's a great question. Andrew, can you see that question or not?
Uh, let me see. There you go.
I can read it too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And it's from Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. It's, "Are the two options cost-neutral? Does the lower amount of right-of-way acquisition proposed under the single point make up for the greater cost of the bridge?" I don't know if this is a question that can come later.
Yeah.
Maybe we hold on to it for now, yeah.
Yeah, I think, Andrew, you might be able to answer this a little bit better when you get to that. That sounds good. Okay, so actually, Andrew, you can go ahead to the next one. So the reason we're here is Kristin had mentioned this before. We're here to talk about Portland specifically. So I'm going to turn it over to Andrew, and he's going to dive into those details so that we can get some feedback from you. So thanks again.
All right. Thank you, Amber. Good evening, everyone. So as Kristin mentioned, that we really, so as the department, MINDOT, we are seeking guidance from our local partners, including the city of Richfield and Hennepin County, on what their preferred alternative should be for the interchange at Portland Avenue. Our interests as the department is to ensure that any of the proposed interchanges do not cause any backups on the freeway. So it leaves, it truly leaves the rest of how Portland is going to look like up to the city of Richfield. Up to the cities, I would say, both the cities of Richfield and Bloomington and Hennepin County. So back in 2019, actually, we did start out with five different interchange alternatives, which we, as Kristin mentioned, we narrowed down to one at the time, which was the tight diamond interchange. But with recognizing the right-of-way impacts that these interchanges had by the request of the city of Richfield and Hennepin County, we did re-look at that some of the decisions had that had been made in the past on the interchange types. So the three interchanges that we have been really focused on in the last couple of months were the tight diamond, the single-point urban interchange. So the tight diamond, it's very common in the states. Try to think of an example within the Bloomington-Richfield area. I can't think of one. Amber, if you can help me out with that one. It's closer to Niklet, but then it doesn't have the ramp on the other side. So.
Right.
Yeah. So that's almost similar to that, the single-point urban interchange, which we are referring to as the spooey, would be what you're seeing at Lindale and Penn Avenue. So these communities would be very familiar with that type of interchange. But then also recognizing that the city of Richfield has built quite a few roundabouts within the city. And they do have some, they do have their own benefits as well, but we did take a revisit of that alternative as well. And that's why you're seeing one roundabout at Portland and 77. But to really make it work, we also had to consider a roundabout as an interchange, at the interchange itself, so over 494. What, based on the further analysis that was done, the roundabout didn't really carry farther along compared to the other two, again, based on even with the inclusion of the roundabout or the interchange, the issues that we saw come out of the roundabout previously at 77 were persistent. And that is mainly because the way the roundabouts are meant to manage traffic flow is fundamentally different from how these other two interchange, or how the signals, I'll say, how the signals handle that traffic flow. Sure, maybe I'll give a brief example that the signals are meant to have traffic get to the signal that, well, we're kind of referring to a flattening effect. So the cars come to the signal and then they're able to, based on this cycle length, they're able to go through that signal and in specific intervals. Versus a roundabout where there is really no control. Whoever gets there first goes through. So the roundabout starts breaking down very quickly depending on the volume that is getting into the intersection. So as I've said, we studied the spooey, the single-point urban interchange, and the tight diamond a little more closely compared to the roundabout. Now, the next couple of slides, we're going to highlight the operations, the traffic operations for these two interchange types. And then at the backend, we'll talk about the right-of-way impacts, potential right-of-way impacts, and then the bike and pedestrian environments that these two interchange types offer. I would also like to point out for this group that the analysis, the comparison between the two was based on the the tight diamond having initially been agreed upon for further development as the preferred alternative from the phase two, the phase two analysis or development process for the corridor. The tight diamond assumed what we are referring to as a full build scenario. And what that means is that it assumed what it was proposing, two northbound lefts. So from Portland to westbound 77. And it also assumed two, what we refer to as look-ahead lanes to make the eastbound turn to 494. It also was including two left turns, southbound Portland to eastbound 77. So that was the full build version of the tight diamond interchange. Now, we compared that to the single-point urban interchange. And the pros or the advantages that we saw with the single point was that we were able to reduce the footprint of the tight diamond by at least one lane, so about 11 feet. But keeping the operations between the two interchange types about the same. So the orange, or what looks to me red, a light red on your screens, is what we refer to as the queue length. So for every hour, 95% of the vehicles that are going through this section of Portland are going to, they're going to experience that kind of delay as they're going, as they're traversing through the segment. So the first image that you're seeing is for the AM peak period, so the morning rush hour. We barely make a difference between these two slides, between the two examples, the two options. As for the department, as I've mentioned, our focus is mainly on what is really happening between, say, 77th and the southern ramps, ensuring that we are not seeing these grids backing up or connecting, going, being so long that they're connecting back to the highway system. So we're seeing that the tight diamond, yes, we are able to hold that queue length within the ramps. Similarly, that's also true for the spooey. Now, there are slight differences in operations that the question that I asked in order to message this is that in the, you know, the magnitude of difference to me doesn't jump out, doesn't jump out to anybody that is, at least didn't jump out to me, but to anybody that is looking at these two slides, two pictures, it doesn't jump out. Though there is some slight differences in how the length, for example, the spooey is almost going, going, almost going to the next block, 76th street, versus what is, what the TDI shows that would be half the block. But again, the TDI has more lanes, more lanes to manage traffic. Well, the full build option for the tight diamond has more lanes and therefore can accommodate more traffic. Versus a spooey that has a reduced lane configuration, but almost is able to handle the same type of operations or traffic that is going through the segment. I would also like to point out that the current analysis, that the analysis that the MINDOT project team has run to date does not include the operations of the D-line that is going to be running along the corridor. But, well, the reason was that, the main reason is that it's just the time, the time, the time factor for everything else that has been, that is being required of, for study, has not allowed us to date to incorporate the D-line operation. So I'm mentioning that because once we do that, then it will definitely affect the queue lengths for either alternative. However, still remembering that in the grand scheme of things, the operations for both alternatives seem to be about the same. So the second slide about operations is the.
Andrew, there's a question. I think there's a good question, timely. So Councilmember Hayford O'Leary is asking specifically what we're looking at here. It means that this is an atypical worst-case scenario, not an all-day, everyday projection. And I think we have a timeframe for this type of queuing defined, correct?
Yeah, yes, we do. And that's a very good question. So the traffic, these maps are based on traffic forecasts. And our traffic forecasts are going out 20 years out. So this picture would be if the traffic projections held true 20 years out, and this is the volume that we are seeing in this segment. But day of opening is not going to be this scenario. We, as Kristin has also alluded to, we have determined what sort of timeframe we would start seeing some of these volumes affecting the operations of the segment. And if I correct me if I am wrong, I believe it was about 10, 15 years out, about 10 years. I'd say mid, mid timeframe of the 20-year forecast that is usually used for traffic projections.
Yeah, mid to late, Andrew. Was the question in response to daily traffic in the peak hour, or was it volumes for the 20-year projection?
My understanding would be, is this an everyday, all-day thing, or is this, say, it's the AM peak hour is what this one's labeled? Is that how many, what's the peak hour defined as, I guess, would be my question.
Right now, that's a good question too, right? Peak hour is really relevant in the community that is being asked. So, but typically, the rush hour, I don't think much is the word typical, because the 494 rush hour is longer. But I would say between three to five hours a day is the rush hour period for any segment. So you may find that, for example, Richfield, it may be the AM rush hour, maybe three hours. And the PM rush hour may also be three hours or four hours. So it really depends.
And so like what was meant by 95th percentile in this case, does that mean that like the typical day would be the 50th percentile? And this would be an unusually bad day, or what does that mean?
Oh, so the 95th percentile is 95% of the vehicles that are going through this segment will experience this kind of delay as they're going through that segment every hour during the rush hour period. That makes sense?
Okay.
And the rush hour period in the AM and PM are three to five hours each?
Within that range, yes.
Andrew, there's a couple more questions I think are timely at this point, too. So Wes is asking, what should we be comparing this against? Are there other strategies to have less traffic at the 95th, for the 95th? Is there anything to shrink those? And I think that's what we've been kind of digging into.
Yeah.
Trying to shrink those lines.
Yes, yes. And I think that's why we're here today as well, that remember, I've mentioned that the tight diamond is the full build, built-out version. It has more lanes than the spooey. So now the question is, if we added a lane on the spooey, is it going to operate better than the full-built tight diamond? It will definitely operate better, but then it it triggers more right-of-way impacts. So I would, I don't want to say more, but similar right-of-way impacts to the tight diamond.
And the next question from Jan is, do the projections include the increased traffic from both 12th and Niklet being reconfigured? And the answer to that is yes.
The answer to that is yes. I do have an ADT map if you guys would want to. The answer to that is yes. I do have an ADT map if you guys would want to see it, but it does show that Portland, the volumes on, the, the projected volumes on Portland are, are quite high.
I think we're good to move on, Andrew. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So uh, it's a similar explanation. This is a map for the PM pick hour. Uh, three to five hour range depending on the location. Um, again, the first quick look at it, you uh, the, the, the lengths are very similar. But when you start really honing down close to uh, to what you're looking at, um. And Christine and, and Joe, Josh, and uh, Joe yourself as well, the number I would start to testing that we, we start raising concerns on especially uh, southbound, southbound continues to be a problem both in the AM and the PM. Southbound Portland to uh, to the, to four ninety four, westbound, also the same issue. Some of the lengths are are getting to be quite long. And the more you try to uh, to address those queues uh, more addressing by either increasing the, the signal times or adding turn lanes, you're going to be increasing the rate of way impacts for, uh, for the alternative. Okay, so first mission, this is the first two slides that I've shared. The message was that operationally, they reduce section for a a single point of interchange would operate about the same as the or full built out version of the tight diamond. Okay, so next couple of slides, then talk about the, the bike and pedestrian environment for these alternatives. And this is one of the reasons back then it was, it had, it was considered that the tight diamond would be a, a better alternative to, to continuing to find a design way. So here, what I'm referring to here is that um, on the left of this side, this is a version of a tight diamond that uh, you were seeing uh, sidewalks or trails, I would say pedestrian access, uh, north and south on either side um, of, of, of Portland Avenue, we, the, the greens, they are the eastbound and westbound movements. Um, they do have median, median controls in, in the middle. So this version does have the full pedestrian environment accounted for. Uh, the single point of brain interchange, uh, the the challenges, some of the major challenges and continue to be challenges that we, we have heard. Uh, one, one from past experiences for such interchanges that have been built on our system, but also nationwide is that they are very difficult for, for to traverse as pedestrians. Um. Depending on how able, able, able to pass a physical, able to person is, maybe some of the uh, the jogs in, in the sidewalks may not be a big deal. Um, but at least they still do allow the north, south movement on either side of Portland Avenue. The issue comes in on how they could accommodate the east west movements. So in, in the, in the, in the current uh, corridor vision, we do uh, we, we do allow for the east west movements on the other side, for example, it's spooey, uh, but the traditional treatment for that uh, for crossing uh, the, the local road would be going up to the, to the adjacent signal to, so somebody from uh, west of Portland would have had to go uh, to Portland, then go north and then loop back down to continue east. Uh, there have been some, so from the previous conversations we have had, there have been uh, ideas or proposals to, to accommodate um, some east west movement on the dashlines as you see here. But uh, again, the more you do that, it's not a really um obvious movement for pedestrians, especially those usually impaired. And how you accommodate those uh, might be, might turn out to be a challenge. We have not uh, gotten approval or say buy in from uh, Minda experts on if this is even possible. But at least why it was even considered is that um in the past, the, the signal technology was not able to accommodate a split phasing in situations like this split phasing, where I mean, you could, what we're trying to say here is that you cannot allow the pedestrians to cross on a separate signal versus the, the vehicular traffic. But again, there's still, that is not just the only issue while we are still having some concerns or heartburn with allowing pedestrian movement in the dash line. Uh, but then secondly, I should also mention that um, the operations that I've shared in the previous slide do not take into account the allowance of the pedestrian movement on the dash line. So once we include that, then definitely operations will be affected and then the performance of this boy will have to be reevaluated on, on how effective it is compared to the tight diamond.
Yeah, Andrew, I'm just gonna add, as being uh, being in those meetings and listening to the conversations that there, I'd say we talked about how we could possibly improve the pedestrian environment at this type of interchange for no less than two hours in those staff meetings, people being creative and trying to find a way to do that. And um, it's not promising to say the least. Uh, there is a, a question, or Dan, um, one of the commissioners threw in some some explanation about that, but then had a question about can concrete, can giant concrete islands be softened with different colored pavement for the sidewalk planting trees, et cetera, on a single point? I think, I think you can. It's that sea of concrete.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You're right. It's that sea of concrete. Yeah, yeah. Depending on how much money you have, yes, you can, you can accommodate them, but yeah. That concrete. And then also, of course, it does increase the bridge deck uh, call, the bridge, the bridge costs as well. And oh, it's good. Yeah, it's good. You've just reminded me, Christine. So one, one of the comments that we also heard uh, from our discussions was the um, ability to expand. Uh, for example, in the future, the tight diamond, if it ended up needing the same type or the same number of lanes as the tight diamond. And uh, we, we, the allowance of the east west movement, there were concerns that that would eliminate that ability to expand this bridge in the future. Any other questions? Keep going.
Uh, yeah, I think you can keep going.
Okay. All right. So we're heading into the geometry or the, what pretty much the rate of way impacts um, for these two interchange types. Uh, so what this screen is trying to highlight, our first, first mission, also the, the, the red boxes are the transit, they are potential transit station locations for the D line. Uh, so I think these are the ones north of seventy seven, uh, what I refer to as the far side of the intersection and the ones south of seventy seven uh, near side. Uh, my understanding is that the, the preference for metro transit is to have the stations opposite each other. Uh, but I don't think, at least when I asked the question, that it is not um, prohibited to have staggered uh, stations where, for example, the southbound one may be on the, on the far side of the intersection and the northbound one is on the uh, on the near side. So converse discussions are still ongoing. But they are also waiting on, on the direction about the alignment, which we're really here to discuss, the, the alignment of, of where the enlightenment of Portland Avenue should, should, should be placed. So the yellow is just showing the uh, the, the double, the, the double left, northbound double left for this tight diamond and the uh, compared to the single left, not, the northbound left for the spooey.
Um, can you just go back to that real quick, Andrew?
Yes.
I just want to make clear that um, everybody understands that that one left turn lane that narrows that crossing of Portland. That's what you get. That's, that's the reduction. That's what it's limited to when you use the point. So I, I would, what is that twelve feet maybe?
About twelve feet, twelve eleven feet. Yes, that's the really difference between the two. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so now for the right of way impacts and unfortunately, we have not had uh, conclusive discussions with the property owners to this stage to determine whether these impacts would be uh, co-considered for acquisitions or not. And to spend some time to, to explain what that means. So in, in our right of way process, in the right of way process that the DOT follows, we can only if it go to the point, we can only condemn or acquire the area of parcel that is needed or that is, that is going to accommodate uh, whatever facility is being built on it. Now that is regardless of whether, for example, as you see on this picture, uh, parcels level eight and nine are losing direct access to Portland Avenue. But then they will have remnant area outside what the DOT needs. These property owners decide on whether they would want to sell their entire parcels to Menda or not. Second comment that also mentioned that uh, now it's, it's state, state law, state policy that we have to follow. But then also take into consideration that some of these slivers of acquisition will be are going to cost us more if, the same as a total acquisition. Cause for businesses, we do have to, to, we have to compensate for loss of business, business revenue. And then the, the, the market value of the, of the property itself. So those two things do come into play. But again, it is the decision of the property owner on whether they would want a full acquisition or not. So Mesh saying that um, the next two slides that you're going to be looking at uh, are considering the, I would say the worst of the align, the worst alternatives for the alignment shift. And what I mean by that is that uh, this, this, this slide shows if the alignment for Portland was shifted to the east to avoid impacts to the park, which is labeled uh, parcel one. And what that would mean for the parcels between uh, seventy seventh street and four ninety four. A quick glance at it doesn't really show much difference between the two, but there is. So starting on the tight diamond, um, parcel number two is a residential home, tells two driveways uh, to Portland Avenue. Uh, the, the shift to the east eats up quite a bit of the southernmost driveway, which uh, we are concerned that doesn't, in our mind, doesn't make this parcel viable anymore. But again, it is up to the property owner to make a decision whether they're going to sell it all, all of it to us. Now, secondly, the, the far side uh, bus station, you could see also has destroying some impact to that parcel. So uh, beyond what the roadway would be causing, there is additional impacts because of the bus station. Uh, the buster. Uh, parcel three, uh, say everything uh, along seventy seven to the north, likely in that, well, it is city, it's public right of way owned by the city. Um, so there is, yeah, there is, there will be impacts to, to city property as well. Uh, on the right side, um, for, for parcel level one, I believe, I think I've seen the documentation that Metro Transit did get approval from the city of Richfield to build the bus stops at this location. So I will not count those as they are impact, but they are already approving but. On parcel four and six, uh, both in, in the, in the vision, in the corridor vision, they do lose direct access to Portland Avenue. And we'll have to again figure out whether they can have uh, access from another location. Uh, on the east side, where really um, in, in either examples, it's, it's, it's what the difference comes from is how much closer you get to these buildings. So for that uh, convenience store and the uh, the Spanish uh, supermarket, I think, straight ahead. So there are two businesses, uh, parcel five. The one that is facing Portland Avenue. For either alternative being shifted to the east, pretty much it's up the, the parking that is along I would say the parking that is facing Portland Avenue. Still trying to, uh, to determine if if the driveway access was to remain, it, it keeps the rest of the, the, the property viable for a business. Uh, but again, they, they shifting to the east, that's, that's what it does. Uh, same thing for parcel seven. Uh, the TDI is leaving less room between the curb line, also the sidewalk, the sidewalk and the building face. So they does, so parcel seven, which is a senior living center, also loses, would lose parking that is, that is along Portland Avenue. And just as a reminder, parcels eight and nine uh, all losing, they are, that they'll be losing access directly to, to Portland Avenue. And also to the, to, to, to the frontage road because the frontage road is going away. And that is, that is why the ramps are coming from four ninety four to join Portland Avenue. Okay, now the, the opposite I would say is if we shifted everything to the west to to reduce on impacting the, the convenience store and the, the, the lack of a better term, the supermarket, I'd say, or, or convenience store um, on parcel five. Uh, so this example uh, holds the, the existing curb line. So there is, so there's the, the parking in front of the building uh, facing Portland remains viable. Same thing with the senior living center. Uh, difference between eight and nine is, is, is really the zero is the same because they would be the, they are still losing access directly to Portland Avenue. And because of the way the ramps are coming in, uh, there's also maybe three years mentioning that uh, there have been some discussions on whether a, a new driveway, a shared driveway between seven and eight and nine can be created around here because of the remnant parcels. But again, these conversations are too, are, are still premature because these the property owners have to agree to have total acquisitions. Uh, on the west side, south of seventy seven, it's still the same situation that four and six are losing direct access to, to Portland Avenue. Now the difference between the east and west is now that uh, the, the sliver of parcel one, which is the pack, how much of it is impacted by either of the alternatives? And again, considering that the difference is about eleven or twelve feet um, of, of impact between the two different alternatives.
Um, Andrew, there's a, a question in the chat about that, losing the access. So is that and, and I know that I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but there's others on the call that um, maybe um, have input onto the future of being able to access lots eight and nine. I mean, it's just that shared access is pretty much it. But that also, if parcels four and six are losing access, how would they get access? I guess, is there, what, are there any um, thoughts on that, I guess? I'm, I'm, I don't mean to the, the, the question in the chat is, so are eight and nine just permanently undevelopable land? There is no spot and that will allow a driveway. So you did touch on that.
I did touch for eight and nine, yes, because there is a driveway that is already between seven, but four and six, it's slightly different because we do have, if, if you can make out the lane, the lane configuration, where we are having a right turn lane to go westbound that is right there. So it becomes more of a safety concern to allow direct access between four and six to, to have direct access to Portland Avenue. Um. I, I, I don't want to speak to any, to, to the planning profession on how we could uh, reconfigure four and six to have access somehow. Uh, but that is something uh, yet to be determined.
Okay.
Andrew, um, this is Josh Potter with Hennepin County. Just want to note here, we recognize that these parcels, um, in the event that the property owners do decide to uh, proceed with just total acquisition here and there's remnant property available. Um, we're certainly, we certainly recognize the importance of Portland Avenue to Richfield. Um, the economic development, the um the economic development potential that's within these parcels. And certainly, there's going to be more discussions on how we do get access to these remnant pieces, just as Andrew noted, eight and nine, uh possibly coming off of a shared driveway with seven, uh briefly as well, talking about four and six. Uh maybe there's availability off of Fifth Avenue or as well the old frontage road off of Seventy Eighth. So just wanted to note that importance to the um to the people on the call, seeing me. Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Okay, so really um for the last couple of slide that I've talked through, this is just a summary of what we thought we can categorize the differences between the tight diamond and the single point interchange. I'm not sure if you want me to go through all of it, but uh maybe leave it out there for now and in the interest of time, start asking questions, Christian.
Um I think that makes sense. Uh if there's any questions, I think this, I mean, is self-explanatory a little bit if you went through the pros and cons. Uh that there is that question that's out there from the beginning about the two options, are they cost neutral? Um does the lower amount of right of way acquisition uh proposed make up for the greater cost of the single point?
That's that's, so that's a question that we cannot answer at this time. Uh what part of the reason is that when uh when we, the 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 rate of weight costs or that we have looked at today are really just the 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 market value of the parcels does not take into account the the loss of revenue. Now, Umbra, help me with this. The BP gas station, how much you pay? Are it two million?
Uh yeah, somewhere in that ballpark. I don't recall, but that sounds about right.
So compared that to, I think the the value of the parcel itself was the lower maybe three hundred, three hundred thousand or two hundred thousand. So it was a low number, but most of the costs were were associated with the loss of revenue. So it's going to be a similar situation because we know these are commercial properties. And to put the number that the anticipated amount of uh revenue losses, it's 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 tougher this time. Um but what we know, uh uh as we speak, that the difference in the capital cost between this buoy and the tight diamond, I think it's upwards, the difference is about, uh I'm getting my numbers right here. It is about five million, the difference between this uh the structures for a spoy, the the bu, the bridge structures for this poor basis, the tight diamond. Um could we make up that difference within rate of way acquisitions? Probably. Cause that's, I mean, for me, that is a, it's a good um range. But again, at this time, I don't think we can give you a definitive answer.
So I guess I would say at this time, um if there's any outstanding questions that haven't been asked about the content of what's been presented, to ask them now. And if if there's none, I, there is an email that council member Wayland had sent out that he wanted some some questions shared and read during this time. I I could start, I mean, I don't know, mayor, if you wanted to do that or if you wanted me to.
Sure, I can read it. Um so I'll just read council member Wayland's uh comments. So he said, sorry, again, I cannot make the meeting tonight. I had already discussed some of this with Director Ashner a couple of weeks ago, but here are my preliminary thoughts if someone can share at tonight's work session. Number one, my biggest concern is that all the options still seem like many more lanes than necessary. Uh some show five lanes going one direction. I'm not a traffic expert, but that seems like overkill coming from a road that is only one lane each way north of Seventy Seventh and south of American Boulevard. Number two, I am slightly inclined towards shifting the road west rather than east, but will revisit this after watching the recording. My hope would be to have at least uh the least impact on the assisted living building since people live there and on the grocery store businesses since this corner of town is a food desert. Number three, I do not have a strong preference yet on type of intersection. My main concern would again be reducing the footprint as much as reasonable per my first point and making sure that there is a good pedestrian access throughout. Um I'll be sure to watch the recording of the meeting and follow up with staff afterwards to share my additional input. Thank you.
Okay, um I think we are, we we have addressed the first question in that email about why we need the number of lanes. I'm not sure if the mayor or Christine feel that was satisfactory or we need to revisit that.
I think that you you probably have addressed it, and I can follow up if he's got, if if when he watches the recording, he has further questions, I'm sure he'll reach out to me. And I think him just sharing his um his preference for the road shift is helpful for the conversation. And then council member Hayford O'Leary, did you want me to go over your comments that you had sent earlier or?
Um I can go over the thing about the interchange type. If there is something to say about the planning situation, I don't know if the planning staff working in that are prepared, but if they have an opinion on how this would affect the sort of small area plan project, the type of interchange, I would like to hear that.
Council member Hayford O'Leary, hi, uh I'm Melissa Palin. I'm uh working with the um CNU team um on examining the um area around in the Portland gateway. Um I can say that um we are disappointed to see um that the need for this many lanes in this area, I think what we're hearing from the community and our outreach, um that the priorities are um walkability and protecting small businesses. Um and unfortunately, I I think we're kind of in a a lose-lose in both of those regards and these options. That said, um we've started to take a close look at these in which we think would be the better option um in terms of redevelopment potential from a s- uh staff and um working group position. We actually think that shifting to the east is the better option. Um the reason for that is that with the removal of the driveway for parcel five, it's our opinion that that lot is essentially, although it doesn't work that way with Minda acquisitions, essentially a total take. Um while there is a driveway on Seventy Seventh Street, it is a one-way drive um coming out of the grocery store. So while we realize that the grocery store is very valuable there, I don't think that it's protected, no matter the option. The nursing home is uh basically an immovable object on this side of the road. Um they're protected in terms of a land use. We do think that some of the remnant parcels could perhaps improve that property um by improving their um parking situation and access there, perhaps using the one of those parcels, maybe eight, that is not usable for anything else um to help that nursing home parcel become um a better place to live. And then um using parcels four and six, uh working with property owners to perhaps combine them with other parcels and gain access off of Fifth Avenue. So um while I think that walkability is very difficult in these scenarios, we're going to work hard with that CNU team to come up with ideas um to make it as best as we can um or to at least put those forward. But in terms of redevelopment, that's the way that we would shift.
Thank you. Um I could just give the rest of my thoughts now since we're going and then I'll pass the torch. Um so in in general, I should really agree with council member Wayland's comments. And although I appreciate what Minda's staff has said, I don't think that they're refuted really. There's a professional opinion that differs from his opinion, which is an opinion that I share, which is that there are too many lanes in both of these scenarios. And I I feel like this is a false choice because both are bad for the community on on the speculation, the the educated speculation, but the speculation of how traffic will behave in twenty years. Um if these parcels, if one of them had an IDS center, we would not, you know, Minda would not spend a hundred million dollars to put that right turn lane in. They're doing it because the parcels are cheap enough to to do so. And I think basically they should make do with less space. I can't tell them what the appropriate thing is to get rid of, but there there should be fewer lanes. We should be prioritizing a walkable community, we should be prioritizing preserving small business. But between these, um if we have to do something, I do not like the single point or Minda interchange, mostly for the reasons that were touched on at the beginning, how difficult this is for people biking and walking. And if you've, you know, I know we got a lot of people on this call, if you have walked across Lyndale and four ninety-four, Penn and four ninety-four, it's it's like being on the surface of the moon, but there's like Chevy Suburbans all around you. Um it's just, it's a miserable place to cross the freeway. Um it's unfortunate that it was such an expensive project that we helped create, and I I don't want to see us repeat the mistake here. And it's even more troubling here that not only is it inconvenient and circuitous to cross the road, Minda might not even allow people to cross the road at all, which would be fourteen hundred feet between American Boulevard and Seventy Seventh Street, where you can't cross the road. And that's, it's just bad for people walking around the neighborhood, especially we've got a lot of apartments here. And it's bad for any future development if you can't cross the street to other development. So I am concerned about that. I'm concerned about the awkward shape of the parcels that would be left by the single point or Minda interchange. And it's, although in both cases, the road feels repellent to future development. Um I think the tight diamond is less bad. Um and then finally, the the issue with the single point or Minda changes, those free right movements, so cars are turning right at twenty plus miles per hour. You're looking over your shoulder and hoping that they stop for you on the crosswalk. The nice thing with the tight diamond, if you're biking or walking, is that at least they're signal controlled, it's a stop and turn on red. So I want the tight diamond with with less lanes, hopefully. Thank you.
Okay, there are some additional uh comments in the chat. Um one of our commissioners, David Governor, is asking, going back to the beginning, is there a priority in the list of goals as um reducing traffic congestion was listed first? So does that mean that that was the top priority?
I'll go back. Umbra, do you want to take that one?
I certainly can. Actually, there is a priority, uh but there's kind of a cutout offline. The first three are what we call primary needs. So those are the needs that we need to address with the improvements that we're going to make on this first project and the vision itself as well. And the, but there is no priority uh within those primary needs, if you will, we have to meet all of them. And then the latter two, the drainage systems and the connectivity are what we call secondary needs. And uh those are the needs that we will try and get in if we possibly can. And we've already committed to the connectivity for bicycles and pedestrians. So um kinda, hopefully that answered your question. There is, there is a priority, but it's more of a a grouping.
Okay, and then there was another commissioner, Husnia Dent, asks, are they including that many lanes in that area in anticipation to adding bus lanes or a train to run down four ninety-four?
Good question. So we do have uh the D-line that is going to be already going along um uh Portland Avenue uh from American Boulevard to Minneapolis, downtown Minneapolis. And that's where the road is going to be ending. Um but no, no, really, it's, it is the the volume increases that uh kind of makes me want to share this to the group that um and this we have shared with um with the city council, Richfield City Council and Transportation Commission in the past. But because of the the access, lots of access from Nicollet and Twelfth, and everything is being shifted on the arterial network. When you start seeing Portland Avenue uh increasing by almost twelve hundred vehicles and north of Seventy Seventh, uh seven thousand vehicles between Seventy Seventh and and the interchange and four ninety-four, called the train two, now that's the access to four ninety-four. Somehow somewhere, we need to, you need to accommodate that volume shift. Um and and that's what is causing uh Portland to grow in terms of number of lanes.
Andrew, this is Josh Potter again with Hennepin County. Just want to add a note about this as we talk about this, I'll I'll call it shifting traffic just based on these access changes. I think a couple of key notes here is the destination certainly for uh this traffic um is getting to and from Bloomington, to and from Richfield, basically four ninety-four. Um as as we've essentially looked into the data of where people are going, coming from and going to, four ninety-four is certainly a key destination um in the sense of getting to and from Richfield and Bloomington. Um of course, at Lyndale, of course, at Portland, of course, at Twenty Fourth Avenue, um especially with the underpass. Um just wanted to note that um there certainly is some, there are some users that um use Portland Avenue south, from the south end of Bloomington up into Minneapolis. Um but a lot of, a lot of the numbers that you're seeing here is because people are basically going to and from the interchange. Also want to note as well, as we talk about forecasts, there's really not a lot of growth in this area in terms of traffic. I mean, pretty much um the way that this was looked at was more of a redistribution. And when I say redistribution, recognizing that the access changes um shift traffic around, not as much more a um not as much, there really isn't much growth in this, in the Portland Avenue corridor. So just wanted to note that as you had that up. Thank you, Andrew.
Yep, thank you, Josh.
Um uh council member Supple has a comment that she would prefer to see the tight diamond and does not have a strong preference on an, either an east or west shift. But initially, her reaction was to shift west, but would like to hear more about community developments concerns. Is there any other um questions? I I guess for me, I mean, as staff, I could offer um some thoughts that we looked at different types of interchanges as we were trying to minimize that footprint of Seventy Seventh and Portland. Um we only brought the single point back to see if we could do that, reduce it and still maintain traffic operations similar to the tight diamond scenario with um that larger intersection. And um and we can do that, it's possible, but there's trade-offs to the non-motorized traffic operations at the interchange themselves, which I think everybody's understanding. So um and really, the reduction at Seventy Seventh and Portland is eleven feet for those eleven to twelve feet for those crossing Portland. There is no reduction for those crossing Seventy Seventh Street. And so I just, I'm curious if there can be a consensus of sorts um on just that interchange type to start before maybe we talk more about the shifts and the little impacts to the adjacent properties. Just throwing that out there.
I think you should have asked the question to somebody, Kristin.
Well, I'm throwing it out there. I mean, I'm hearing that um council member Supple prefers the tight diamond. I I heard that council member Hayford Larry feels that way. I I think that's what I'm hearing. I may, maybe I should just say um is that the consensus from um people? And I'm going to assume that it is at this point until I hear it here otherwise, and we can confirm at the end um before we we close the meeting.
And folks are putting their um preference in the chat as well, and so far it is tight diamond.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. Mayor. So assuming that will hold, then I think for the shift, I'm hearing, I'm hearing east um and I'm hearing west. So um I think the park, um you know, for me, I think of it as park impacts because south of Seventy Seventh Street, there's definitely impacts. I mean, and you can see and understand about the grocer and and the um nursing home folks. I guess for me, I think of it as um the park and then then that single family home as well. Like we could maybe try to find a balance. Right now, I think what's mostly shown here is holding that eastern line or holding the western line.
Uh huh.
Although there is impacts on both sides of the road. Um.
Kristin, could I add some context of historical discussion that staff has had with the project team? Um I I'd like to note, Amy Markle, our Parks and Recreation Director, was unable to make it tonight. Um acting Acting Director Chris Wybe is here and Chris, you're welcome to chime in if you'd like. But I know Amy has, has expressed pretty significant concerns to our public work staff with impacts to the park. There are, the new dog park is there. That would be affected by shifting the roadway into the park. And, and obviously she's going to advocate for, for park space. That's her, her job. But I just wanted to share that she does have significant concerns and would, the, the position of parks and recreation would be to minimize park impacts as much as possible.
That's correct, Joe. Obviously that dog park's award winning dog park. The Richfield Recreation strives to maintain a known net loss of parkland. As a fully built out community, every square foot of parkland is precious green space for this community. So it's really important that we try to not take away space there.
One clarifying question about the east shift. Just took, I think it was what Melissa said earlier, but even if it shifted east, it would not require removing the nursing home. Is that right?
Commissioner Heyford O'Leary, the, the shift that they're showing would not require the removal of the nursing home. And Josh can perhaps answer this as well or chime in. But our understanding is that a driveway could be maintained for the nursing home off of Portland. And so our initial thoughts were that, you know, parcels eight and nine are losing all access. They're losing it from Portland and they're losing it from the frontage road. And there's a significant grade change between parcel eight and parcel nine. There's a large retaining wall there. So parcel nine, I'm honestly not sure what can be done with parcel nine unless that entire corner is redeveloped. The nursing home probably will not go anywhere, so that makes that more difficult. The nursing home could stay. Our thought is that we could use parcel eight perhaps to improve their situation. It's really the only thing that we can think could possibly happen with parcel eight. Does that help clarify?
Yes, thank you.
Kristin and Mayor and everybody else on the call, one thing that we haven't really, as a DOT, invested a lot of time into is if there were park impacts, if that 11 or 12 feet were impacted on the park, what sort of mitigation could be, could be done for that loss, for that area loss? And would be, would love to hear from, to continue working with the city to see if there are any options that can, could be considered. That is if the park impact was a, if the, if the city was amenable to impacting the park. So what sort of mitigation would, could be a viable alternative? So I'm kind of referring to things like maybe improving the amenities on the dog park. Any other park improvements that could be considered? So just wanted to throw that out on the table as well, that we as a DOT are interested in hearing from the city about that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. There's some more comments. City Manager Rodriguez says another concern Director Markle has expressed is that Roosevelt Park is located in a high density housing corridor in Richfield and serves as a primary green space for recreation and wellness for a large part of the local community, many of which are low income families. Note, 24% of Richfield residents live at or below the federal poverty line. And then there's a comment from Councilmember Heyford O'Leary about the slight preference for shifting east, but not as strong. So. Other comments, smaller encroachments into the park during discussions of Orange BRT line station at that intersection, for example, have gotten some pretty significant pushback within the Community Services Commission. The larger push west, okay, the larger push west or the shift to west tight diamond would likely seem even more negative reaction. Oh, that's from Kevin. From the Community Services Commission chair. So. Now Wes is asking, would an inverted single point change work?
That is honestly something that we have not looked at, but it will definitely have more rate of impact, especially to, to the rural businesses, I'd say closest to 494. So probably six, eight and nine, seven might be looked in there as well. The cans of wood, or the west of sixth major for getting to play. So that depending on how you share it, on what side of the interchange you do it, but yes, it definitely have more business impact.
So I think I'm hearing, I think I'm, my, the feedback I'm getting is to minimize things, you know, impacts to the park and, and maintain parcels five and seven. And I guess I haven't heard much about, I mean, even if we could stay completely out of the park, but then we're impacting that single family home, if that would be something to explore? Or if we don't want to go that far to the east, those are things I think I could. Or if there's somebody else that should be, you know, if it's community development that wants to help with that. But I think the sooner we can understand the direction on that, the better. One other thing I do want to make sure that gets brought up tonight is that D line. Well, the D line did get brought up, so there'll be impacts to that. But also the possibility of that dual left turn lane for westbound, Andrew? That the next step after we get direction tonight, or in any case, the next step is the technical group really digging into the traffic operations. And that includes the D line impacts to traffic through the corridor. So like Andrew mentioned earlier, the D line stopping in lane four times an hour has not been added yet to the traffic analysis. So obviously that's going to impact it. And I would imagine what that's going to do during those peak hours is make those lines longer that we saw. So the queues lengths will grow. And one way to help shrink the longest queues, which is the, the westbound left turn lane and the southbound through movement, is to add a dual left to that westbound movement. Because it shortens the, the green time they need to take up to clear the lane and that allows for more green time for the southbound movement. And so that would have additional packs to right away. And I anticipate that will be something that we'll need to do once we see the D line impacts. And I just wanted to tell you guys that because we already know that, or I expected will be the case. So. Everybody's so excited.
Maybe could you just go over again? So we're all on the same page about the, the tight diamond and then moving it to the east versus the west again, just summarizing it. But listening to what Melissa had said, either way, east or west, the impacts on the four and six, you know, aren't going to be substantial in the sense of they're, they're both, either one is going to be impactful to a similar level if it's east or west. And then if we go east, it will have minimal impacts on the park. And then I don't know if the answer is then we would have to look at the single family home if we shift east or not necessarily. Could you just walk through again those two options?
You, you're doing such a great job. So the piece that you, the remaining piece was, yes, the shift to the, to the east does impact parcel number two, which is a single family there. The tight diamond has greater impacts. Cause if you're looking at the two pictures, so the one on the left, that is the tight diamond. It does impact the driveway, the, so it passes two houses, two driveways, one south closer to the south parcel line and the one north. So that does impact both. But the single point because of that 11 foot wide difference between the two, between the tight diamond is probably only impacts the the southern, southernmost driveway for parcel number two.
And I guess I was just, sorry, I was meaning kind of tight diamond, not the single point urban interchange, because it sounds like everyone's kind of on the same page with the tight. And but then diamond east versus west will, if we move east, does that for sure, what is the impact on that single family home? Does that mean it would have to be, we'd have to remove it for sure? Not necessarily? Just looking for the east and west difference on the tight diamond a little more.
Can I just offer too, Andrew? There, we don't have to shift all the way. These were, my understanding is what's, what's been drawn here is the two extremes.
Extremes, yes.
So if there is no appetite for, for talking to parcel two about any kind of impacts, we would just shift it further out. So back to the west ways and then we'd be having impacts to the park. This is the only scenario on the left here that you're seeing that would not have impacts to the park outside of that D line station.
That is correct. Yes. So really that's the difference. Yep.
Yeah. But I mean, if you want to go through, you want to show the two shifts, you'll have to go back. Yeah.
Yeah. So, so yeah, this is the option of shifting the tight diamond to, to the west. So you could see that this lever, again, worst case that we do not touch parcel two, but then it has greater impacts to, to the park.
So I don't know if folks want to reinforce anything they've already said. Essentially it's the, you know, a single family home impact or the park impact. If we shift it, if we shift as minimal space impacting the park, do we know what level of impact it is, you know, in that single family home? Or is that something that can be negotiated or looked at, the level of impact on that home?
I, I believe so, Mayor. Yes. If, if the goal is to, is to keep parcel two viable, meaning that there's still room for them to get to, to their house. But the driveway is long enough that they are not going to be sticking out in, in the, in Portland. We definitely will investigate that. But one of the reasons why, of course, we're sharing the extremes was that is the, are the park impacts completely off the table? Or is there some appetite? Maybe not a lot, but is the city willing to consider some park impacts? And definitely try to minimize those as much as possible. So if the answer is yes, then we can go back and start refining and optimizing the, the solution for the tight diamond. If it is no, then most of the shift to the east that we have to be looking at.
Andrew, this is Melissa. Can you remind me, have you spoken with that homeowner?
Yes, we did. And so Amber, Amber, you, Amber, you did have that conversation. I don't know if you want to give us a summary.
Yeah, I did have the conversation with that property owner. She, I didn't ask her directly about complete purchase of the property, but I did ask her about a couple, or her opinion essentially about impacts there. She actually favored impacts to the park is what she told me. She also wanted more information regarding compensation if she does have an impact. So I did forward her our right of way unit supervisor's contact information. I have not heard if she's contacted that, our staff or not. She also did make the comment about having the D line stationed so close to the property. They've, they've received a lot of complaints about looting or not looting, but garbage, loitering, some nasty things it sounds like as well that has happened there because of the proximity with that property to the D line station. So those are some of the comments that she did tell me. I, I didn't get a sense whether she would be amenable to a complete take or even partial take. So.
So I think what I'm hearing is that we shift to the east. I think that's, am I wrong? I, I think we're going to look at how far we can go east and maybe work with that property owner on parcel two.
That's where I think I am. I don't know where others are at. Kyle and Sean are there too.
And we can, we can also look to see if we just, you know, stay out of that property. I guess I don't understand completely on that, that shift to the west, how far away from impacting parcel two it is. I mean, it looks like we have some room to shift, but I'm not appreciating how much.
And Kristin and members in the mayor, we can take that back and see what we can do to optimize that shift and, and see how much of it would go into that parcel two and how much would impact the, the park there? And just kind of play with those numbers a little bit, if that makes sense. Play with the geometry.
I guess it would be helpful for us to know if there's an appetite to, you know, have that discussion with parcel two about a total take? If, if MINDAT's open to that as well. Since, since Amber doesn't sound like you, you went there. You know, I think there needs to be a balance from what I'm hearing about south of the intersection and not, not squeezing too hard on five and seven. But still trying to shift out of the park, basically. So I guess I, I'm not unclear on any appetite for that parcel two impacts.
Yeah, Kristin, that's something we can definitely do. We can contact that parcel owner and, and see what the appetite is.
I have a question. I don't, I don't have the expertise to know, but does it have to shift the same direction on both sides of the intersection? Could you do more of a shift to the west, south of the intersection and more of a shift to the east, north of the intersection? Or is that completely not workable?
Josh, you may be in a position, I think, of bargaining his traffic, but the answer is, at least my understanding of the information that has been shared with me is that.
I can certainly speak as well.
Yeah. Okay. So, so we're trying to say, it's, the trick is trying to align lanes. For example, the southbound lanes and the northbound lanes, right? That's why you're seeing that this median is, is aligning with the southbound left to eastbound 77. Vases align, aligning with the northbound left. So there's some, just for intersection safety operations, there is some alignment that needs to happen. Therefore it restricts the amount of shift that has to happen on either side of the intersection. Josh, you can expand on that.
Thank you, Andrew. Actually, I think you did a great job on explaining that. But yeah, certainly typically through an intersection, we like to generally keep the lanes on. For example, here on Portland at 77th, on the north and the south side, pretty lined up with each other. Another reason being the left turn lanes as well. We like to see those kind of oppose each other that way too. Left turners can see traffic coming in the opposing direction as well.
And then Andrew and Amber, did you see the comment from the mayor? Um, there's a few comments in there about shifting east seems to make the most sense. But then the mayor is saying she'd be open to exploring a full take on person two and see what the options we have in terms of how far east we can shift. But that she's saying yes to exploring it only, not yes, without looking at options.
Yep, thanks, Kristen. Sounds good.
So uh mayor and members, is it is it a fair statement to say that I would say we're trying to if if two is on board for for acquisition, then can shift years, but also taking into consideration of keeping five and seven as viable also businesses or provide viable access to them? Is that a fair statement as we're trying to shift everything to the east?
What was the first part you said about two? Sorry, can you say?
To to after following up with number two and if they are agreeable to a total acquisition, then we know that it got it, we can get out of the park and shift things to the east. However, the the consideration then would be to keep to make sure that five and seven are kept as viable. Viable business alternatives.
Yeah, I'd say yes to the five and seven part. And then the two, I guess, you know, I wouldn't want to consider a full take if there's options that they're open to that aren't that either. So if it's not necessary to not necessarily go there, but just to see, you know, if you could come back and say, okay, shifting to the east, here's kind of the options that we have, we have all the way this way or or here's kind of what we have to work with.
Sure. Thank you.
So Andrew, there was a couple of comments mentioning the tight diamond preference with the reduced lanes. And I think to clarify that that does not work. The queue lengths backed up southbound almost to seventy fifth street. So um that's why we started looking at a single point in the first place was to find out if there was a way we could find an interchange that allowed us to reduce this intersection. So just to be clear that the tight diamond, we did look at reducing the lanes here. That's where we were for all these conversations. I'm got pretty intense um in that queue length, just southbound alone was almost at seventy fifth street through seventy sixth street up to seventy fifth street.
That's correct.
Kristen, could you clarify what was different in that scenario? Was it just the loss of the right turn lane? Was it the loss of a through lane?
Yeah, I think that it's it was the same intersection that's shown at the single point right now, if I'm not mistaken.
You're right, Kristen, yes. So so the difference is that the southbound allows currently was allowing two left but left turns same way with the northbound. So eliminating that you're trapping traffic that is trying to go east on seventy seven and and they'll be backing up into the southbound through lane. So that's how the queues that um yeah, start increasing.
Okay, I I would say if it's convenient or at all possible to share, if you have similar maps for what the other scenarios look like to get a sense of how bad that is. To me, five percent of drivers experiencing that level of delay is not unacceptable, but other people may not agree with me.
I'm assuming we have that or you have that, Andrew, to share.
We have not these nice maps. We have just the numbers, number table. So we have to create the the maps for you guys.
Good, thank you.
Um, also Commissioner Dunzer is asking how this looks on the Bloomington side. I don't know that you have anything prepared to show that.
Yeah, not really, but um you could kind of infer. So this four ninety four and this is south of so Portland American Boulevard is just slightly down down south of the page here. But yeah, we do have some queuing as well uh in in Bloomington, depending on the type that you the interchange type that you go with.
And Andrew, there are also right away impacts south of four ninety four into Bloomington as well, correct?
Uh, yes, there are um quite a few actually. So the just quickly, the the street mall on the west side, it's it's losing the parking that is right next to Portland Avenue. And then there is a business that is right at the corner, let's say, the northwest quadrant of Portland and American Boulevard that uh would will lose its parking completely. So we've been assuming again a total acquisition for that. But until we get to hear from the property owner, we do not know at this time.
So I apologize if I've missed any comments, questions in the chat at this point. If there's anything that's been unanswered, please, please speak up.
So Director Asher, do you feel like you have an and Minda, do you feel like you have enough direction from folks? Or is there anything additional you want to make sure we discuss?
Um, I I think that I have direction. Is there any conversation that we want to have, I guess, around that food mart? And I think that and Melissa brought up the loss of access there may trigger a total take. I I I guess um regarding the interchange, I think it's where we, you know, the tight diamond is the preferred at this point and we'll move forward and bring that back to the technical group. Um, and I think I think Andrew, Amber, you have a strong feeling about the the shift and where to go from here. I, you know, I I guess we we talked a little bit about parcel two, parcel five is there a that's really the only, you know, seven's gonna be there, eight and nine are are impacted. Four and six are is it is what it is. I guess five is the outstanding one, maybe that if there is to be a conversation about it, we could have that now. And and actually, Councilmember Wayland did bring up parcel five as part of his comments. And if not, I think um I feel like I have good direction. And I I just ask that Amber and Andrew, if they feel the same way, they might be good. There's another comment in that, is there a possibility of moving business, um, the parcel five business to another Ridgefield location? I think that would come up naturally as part of the right away process that when once the impacts that are known and you're you're speaking with the property owners there.
Kristen, this is Amber. Yeah, I think we have good direction. I just I just want to clarify before um we end that I I heard the the park is important and to reduce as impacts to the park is really a priority. So shifting east and working with the parcel two owner and seeing what um what their opinions are regarding a full or partial take and then um seeing what we can do to uh reduce the impact impacts to five or at least um know what the situation at parcel five would be with that shift to the east is what I've heard. Can Kristen or mayor, can you verify that is correct statements that I just made?
I think so, but folks jump in if you disagree.
Amber, Amber and Andrew, just to clarify, on any of these shifts, that driveway from Portland to parcel five goes away, correct?
No, no, on the contrary.
No.
We we are, yeah, we are trying to save um access to five from Portland Avenue.
Okay, so there is a scenario where there is still my early understanding was that only the driveway to seven could stay. So that's not correct.
No, that's not correct, no. Probably referring to an idea of version where we had to write turn lane. So um but no, we can, we can work through trying to retain access from Portland to parcel five.
Thank you.
So I apologize if I repeating myself or repeating a question that just wanted to clarify. So I know the direction, at least what I've heard, is that reduce impacts as much as possible, not only to the park, but also to the businesses. Is that is that a true statement or are we still discouraged from touching the park completely?
Andrew, so in the statement you just made, are you saying uh you said reducing the impacts to the commercial or the businesses and reducing impacts to the park versus complete then having more impacts on the commercial at the and saving, you know, having zero impacts on the on the park? Are you asking essentially zero? Are people, are you still asking kind of are people somewhat open to looking at minimal impacts on the park or none at all? Is that the question essentially?
Yes, thank you, thank you, ma'am. That's my question, yes.
I'll just jump in. I think for me, I would like to have as little impacts on the park as possible. It's hard for me to kind of say park versus the the stores without knowing kind of the options we have to work with. So it sounds like there is consensus around minimal impact. Maybe it's minimal to no impact on the park and show sharing what options, what that would look like. So maybe it's an option, this is minimal impact on the park, but then it has some benefit to the commercial versus, I guess, I don't know if this is my my way of saying, if you could, I can't tell you the answer right now, but if you could give a couple of options, um, that would help.
Sure, sure, thank you.
Yeah, I think, Andrew, what I'm hearing is to do, you know, don't shift completely out of the park. I don't think it's possible to get completely out of the park and not completely. If you go scroll down to the the shift to the east, which is what we're really talking about, um, or scroll up, I guess, maybe. I mean, I think in this scenario, parcel five has no, I mean, you, we already know as a technical team that you can hardly get a passenger vehicle in that entrance without hitting the building. So it's not probably likely that we could shift that far and maintain that business. I'm just gonna go there. I don't know if that I'm right or wrong, but um it's gonna be difficult. So I think working with parcel five to see where we can, how far we can shift. I think that's really gonna be the key here. And I and that my understanding is taken away from this meeting that we want to do, do what we can to maintain that parcel five business. Um, there was a comment from Commissioner Dunzer here that's he's claiming it's an out of the box idea. Um, what if we kept everything like it is but didn't allow people to use the nickel it on off ramps during rush hour? This would keep traffic moving and wouldn't destroy these businesses. I would agree that's out of the box.
Right.
And I think, you know, I guess that's probably a more of something that would have been a vision discussion. I don't know, Andrew, if you have a response for that. I think at this point now, Commissioner, that there are stormwater treatments in the area where the nickel ramps currently are in the in the final vision plan, right?
Yep, you're absolutely right, Kristen. And what I would add on is that um consider that what probably is being that that comment would refer to what we what we call the no build scenario. So the no build did also take into consideration the operations both on the highway and the local network and why we decided not to do the no build. Because sometimes it does happen that the no build is the better option or the better scenario. But with the analysis that we have done, I showed that um the no build or keeping the keeping the things the same wouldn't work.
Mayor? Can I just uh?
Go ahead.
Add a comment. So I feel like I'm hearing a lot of consensus from policymakers on their preferences, but there's not enough information to make any definitive decisions. So do the technical staff have enough um from the policymakers enough direction to go to the next step and get some more information to bring back to policymakers? And and what will that look like going forward?
Andrew, do you want me to answer that?
I was I was waiting on who the question was directed to.
Oh, okay.
I I so I feel that we have good enough direction and that direction is try to reduce property impacts as much as possible. So today we shared, we shared with this group, the extremes, the east passive waste. Now we're just so the the next step would be trying to bring things more in the middle and come back and share what that would look like. So I feel where I was sitting, we have the direction that we really hadn't had in the past.
And if I can, then how does it come back to policymakers? And what is what does that look like, what's that process? Well, that would be for us to to define as the city, I would think. And and so I think I'd want to think about that for a bit. I think if we as staff, I mean, I think the direction that I have is to help as part of the project team, strike a balance between the impacts at this point. And I have my eye on property and the property five from what I heard tonight. So um and then there's another comment in there about minimizing to the park, which we've always heard. That's kind of what we've been trying to do is minimize that park impact this this time. But um so Katie, I think we would just work with what we learn and how to bring it back. It might probably be another meeting, I would suppose, or maybe if it's clear cut and we think we have a good answer, we can do it a different way.
Yeah, Kristen, can I can I add on to that? I think I agree with your statement and really in my mind, it's it's going back and seeing what how far east we can shift and still make parcel five uh work as a business. That that really is, um, I think the key to me and that that is great because we hadn't had, we hadn't really quite figured out the direction before and and that helps a lot in my mind.
Yeah, and just so the group knows, we we are going to be saving the the comments in the chat as well. So we will have those. I appreciate all the the input.
Okay, so does that city manager Rodriguez, does that help in answering your question?
Very much, thank you.
Great. Great, thank you. So do we have any last questions, comments, items that are pending before I adjourn the meeting? It looks like we have no more comments. If there's anything that you forget that you wanna uh, raise, please email myself or our staff or Minda um, with additional comments. Otherwise, thank you so much um, to Amber and Andrew and to our city staff for presenting. And um, we're glad to know that you have the direction you need, and we look forward to look, reviewing this again in the future. Thanks, everyone, and I will adjourn our meeting.